Ready, guys? All right. I call the order of this regularly scheduled meeting. Is something wrong with the lighting? Yeah. Scheduled meeting at the 34th City Council, May 20th to 25th at 7:00 PM. Thank everyone for their slight delay and their patience as we had a meeting prior to this. Mr. Clerk, can we have the roll?
Councilmember Enos.
Here.
Councilmember Hamud.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember El-Sawafi.
Here.
Councilmember Herrick.
Here.
Council President Serini.
Here.
Can we have a call?
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Council President Protem Herrick.
Thank you, Council President. It is my honor to introduce Father Kim Chase of Sacred Heart Catholic Church who delivered tonight's invocation. I invite all who are able to please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, we give you praise and thanks for your many and rich blessings. We thank you for the gift of life, for the gifts, talents, and abilities to fulfill our callings, for sustenance, and for friendship. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing our responsibilities and completing our duties. We thank you for the freedoms you provide and for your love from your boundless and gracious nature. You've established authorities to govern, to promote peace and order and justice, and therefore, tonight, we pray for the members of this city council and for all our community leaders. We ask that you graciously grant them, in these complex and challenging times, a share in your wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of these days, a deep and a correct sense of the welfare and the true needs of the people they serve, a keen thirst for justice and for all that's right, confidence in what's good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there's honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, and joy in the tasks they've undertaken. May they seek at all times to preserve peace, promote the common well-being, and the prosperity of all. We pray to you, who are Lord and God, through Christ our Lord, forever and ever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. Appreciate it. All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first item of business?
Item number four, resolution by Council President Serini, supported unanimously, recognizing May 2025 as Military Appreciation Month in the city of Dearborn and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Dearborn City Council proudly recognizes May 2025 as Military Appreciation Month, honoring the unwavering dedication and sacrifices of the United States Armed Forces, the freedoms and the security enjoyed by our citizens today, our direct result and the commitment and service of these brave individuals, both past and present. This month serves as a reminder to reflect on their contributions and acknowledge the vital role they play in upholding our Constitution and our express gratitude for their efforts in preserving liberty at home and promoting peace around the world. It is resolved that the Dearborn, 34th Dearborn City Council hereby recognizes May 2025 as Military Appreciation Month in the city of Dearborn, and it be given immediate effect. We'd like to thank everyone here that has served or have served before or currently serving and remind everyone that this month, I think we do this on an annual basis to let everybody recognize military service. And if there's any comments from our colleagues, I'd like to make. All right. Hearing and seeing none, a unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item number five, resolution by Council President Serini, supported unanimously, recognizing May 2025 as National Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Dearborn and calling this observance to the attention of all of our employees, residents, and members of the business community and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And the Dearborn City Council would like to recognize May 2025 as National Mental Health Awareness Month, joining the nationwide effort that has taken place every May since 1949. Mental illness can disturb a person's emotions, thinking, and behavior, often impacting their ability to function in a daily life. This annual observance aims to raise awareness, fight stigmatism, educate the public, and advocate for policies that support those living with mental health conditions and their families. The 34th City Council encourages all residents, government agencies, healthcare providers, organizations, and research institutions to take part in recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month by promoting understanding and support. The city of Dearborn reaffirms its commitment to helping individuals live healthier and more fulfilled lives, call attention to the importance of mental wellness throughout our community. Any questions or comments on the mental health ordinance? All right, and many people that do know the city of Dearborn has opened their own health department and has, since the new administration under Mayor Hamud's leadership, been looking at mental health and health issues and all the policies and all the ordinances that we are passing. Councilwoman Herrick, did you want to add?
That's what I was going to say.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry, I took a break. All right, any other questions or comments? A unanimous roll should be attached. Next item.
Item six, resolution by Councilmember, I'm sorry, Council President Serini, supported unanimously, recognizing May 18th through May 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week in the city of Dearborn and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, excellent. The Dearborn City Council recognizes May 18th through 24th of this year as National Public Works Week. Public works professionals, engineers, managers, and frontline employees pay vital well in maintaining the infrastructure that supports our health, safety, and quality of life. From managing transportation systems and water services to responding to emergencies and maintaining public facilities, these individuals work tirelessly to ensure our communities remain safe and functional and resilient. This week serves as a time to honor their commitment and to encourage all the residents to recognize essential contributions to public works, teams that take every day. They take every day. Their dedication not only is critical to our infrastructure, but enhances the well-being of our entire city. So I know that we appreciate it to our DPW people. You know, my mom used to tell me people care about their garbage being picked up, and they get a police or fireman when they call. That's the main services of the government. And I can tell you, when we had some issues with the contract of our contractor, when they were bought out and sold, we definitely got calls and we definitely heard. So we do appreciate these behind-the-scenes, you know, there's a lot of work that goes behind for us rolling a can out to the street and then come back and take it home and take it back inside. There's a lot of people that are doing a lot of work to make sure that those things are picked up and taken care of. So we do appreciate it, especially with the infrastructure and the water and the sewer stuff that we're doing, a lot of good things that we've been doing to combat flooding. So we do appreciate that. Any questions or comments? Okay, unanimous roll should be attached. Next item.
Item number seven, resolution by Councilmembers El-Sawafi and Hamud, supported unanimously, honoring Flag Day in the city of Dearborn and reaffirming legal protections for flag retirement ceremonies by the veterans and organizations, scout troops, and congressionally chartered patriotic organizations by burning unservable U.S. flags in accordance with federal guidelines and further recognizing that there is no limit on the number of flags that may be honorably retired during such ceremonies when conducted in a dignified and respectful manner and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Dearborn City Council proudly recognizes Flag Day on June 14th. It is a time to reflect on the importance of American flag and all it represents, the freedom, unity, and the shared values that brings us all together as a nation. First adopted in 1777, the flag has become a powerful symbol of hope, pride, and resilience. We encourage all our residents to take part in Flag Day as well as Flag Month by flying their flag at their homes and businesses. The council also supports the right of veteran groups, scouts, and other patriotic organizations to respectfully retire worn flags through ceremonial burning as a meaningful way to honor their service and symbolism. Councilman El-Sawafi had brought this item forward. I know it's a regular occurrence as far as us doing Flag Day, but the Flag Month to be recognized. So Councilwoman, did you have something to add?
Yes, oh, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to add that this resolution is more than just symbolic. It reaffirms our commitment to honoring the flag of the United States of America and those who serve under it. Properly retiring unserviceable flags is a solemn tradition, and there's no legal limit on how many can be retired in a ceremony. What we're doing here today is we're making it clear that Dearborn stands with our veterans and patriotic organizations in preserving this important tradition. I want to thank my colleagues for their support, and especially Councilwoman Ken Paris, who's been steadfast on this issue as well. So thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Herrick.
Thank you, Council President. For people that grew up here in Dearborn, we may have been aware that there was a flag burning ceremony to retire unserviceable flags. But for people that live in surrounding communities, they might not even be aware that there is such a thing. So the people that have lived here become ambassadors, and some of those folks are former service members, people who are involved with the DAWVC here in Dearborn. They talk about this ceremony that we have here in Dearborn and let others know that they're welcome to come to Dearborn for this ceremony. But I'm particularly touched when I hear from scouts and young people who participated in the ceremony over the years and moved to other communities, and they come back here because they feel it's such a special tradition that they were part of it as youth, and then they come back here to be part of the ceremony or watch, observe the ceremony when we have it here in Dearborn because it is unique. Not all communities do this, and it is a wonderful partnership between the city of Dearborn, our administration, and our community, and especially the Allied War Veterans Council, that we continue to have this tradition. It sets us apart from the communities around us and even across the state. So we have some members from the DAWVC here sitting in the audience today, and I thank you for keeping up those traditions and for teaching the youth how important it is to treat our flag with respect and what it means to have it flying. We have one right here probably behind us, but that also, once it's, needs to be retired, that there's a way to do that, and that in Dearborn, we do that as a community. So thank you.
Yep. Councilwoman Hamud?
Yeah, so I think this is a great resolution. I think normally, we don't necessarily do specific resolutions on this, and so I'll actually offer another suggestion in a moment. But, you know, I think a lot of people feel that Dearborn is a place that is very patriotic and very welcoming to both veterans, but also to, you know, the celebration of service. I think, as everybody knows, you know, we're one of the only cities in the state that do a full-blown Memorial Day Parade and one of the largest and longest-running. And like Council President Serini likes to say, even the mayor of Dearborn Heights comes to celebrate all of his events here in the city of Dearborn.
Just pointing it out, just pointing it out.
So I think it just, you know, it just goes to show, you know, we are very patriotic here, and I always try to explain that to people when they come from out of town questioning, you know, what's going on in Dearborn. I'm like, have you ever gone to any of our veteran ceremonies, Memorial Day Parade? I'm like, let's talk about that, you know, they always want to talk about other things. So I think that's, you know, this is one of more of those things, you know, that goes to show we really are a very committed city to both our country and people who serve. So now, I do have one thing that I want to offer as a slight modification to this. In the resolve clauses, we didn't actually add the recognition of Flag Day in the city of Dearborn. So I just want to add the wording, resolve that the Dearborn City Council designates June 14th of each year as U.S. Flag Day in the city of Dearborn.
Yeah, it's in the whereas, but you like it in the resolve clause?
No, but that's for Congress, not for us.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, so.
All right, so it was, you are the supporter, Councilman El-Sawafi, do you have any objection to adding that? Sorry? All right, so, Mr. Clerk, just for the record, and Jackie, that we put it in the resolve clause, she'll indicate that the city of Dearborn added additional resolve clause setting the city of Dearborn. Do you want to add it to one of these three, Councilman Hamud, or?
No, just add a separate resolve.
A separate resolve indicating that the city of Dearborn, 34th City Council.
Designates June 14th of each year as U.S. Flag Day in the city of Dearborn.
Yep, so it'll be perpetual. All right, and hearing no objections to that, we'll modify that by the offer and support. Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. The comment that I wanted to make, especially for the viewing audience, June 14th every year is Flag Day. Down at Ford Fields, 6 o'clock Saturday, June 14th. We anticipate this occurring again as it does every year on June 14th. So pay homage to the respect that we have for not just our service members, but the flag that they served under to protect and serve. I will just tell you something personal about veterans. I had the opportunity, when I was very young, had my draft card, didn't get drafted, you know, for Vietnam. It was at the end of the war, you know, at that particular time. So I was very fortunate in not being drafted. But I also had a lot of respect for veterans back then because I was a member of the Dearborn Police Department. And who were a lot of the people that were coming back were veterans that were in the police department. Virtually everybody was a veteran, and then all of a sudden, we're getting everybody from Vietnam. So it was either two choices for me because I couldn't afford the education. It was either in the cadet program and becoming a police officer or going into the service. And I know that I would have made the service career had I not been given the opportunity to serve this city. But you and the audience, all the veterans that are here in the Dearborn Allied War Veterans Council, I appreciate what you do and thank you for coming forward with this resolution. Excellent.
And just lastly, for me, if anybody else has anything, just a funny story on this aspect. A lot of things that people do take for granted here in the United States, obviously. We haven't had a draft in, I can't tell how many years, and so on and so forth. And in many countries throughout the, yeah, many countries throughout the world, you're required to do, especially in European countries, that everybody at a certain age must serve two years for their country. So something to be said for this day and age or these last few generations where people have voluntarily signed up to serve their country. We hear it about all the time. And for me, my son, which is funny, because at 18, he got a thing in the mail saying he has to sign up for voluntary, yeah, civil service. He's like, what's that? I go, it's like a draft. I had explained it to him, and he said he had to fill it out. So it is solemn for service, as Councilman Paris has indicated, depending on what side you take, whether it's government or, and my brother's been serving over 30 years in the Navy, and so we know how it feels to have a service member. And so it's a nice look at it now that you have, it's a volunteer. Volunteer group is these men and women, and I think that's a big, big difference than what you have in the rest of the world, where they'll put you in, you know, you have to serve two years, most of the European countries, you know, or it's a jail time. So we do appreciate it, and hopefully, this does well for the, going forward through the rest of the term. Councilman Hamud?
Just one last note on Flag Day. I attend almost every year that I can remember, but this year, I'm getting married, so if you guys don't see me there, it's because I can't make it. Thank you.
There you go, there you go. All right, any other questions or comments? Any objection to unanimous roll? Okay, unanimous roll should be attached. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item number eight is public comments.
All right, so the council rules were acted at this term to allow 30 minutes prior, 30 minutes for public comment prior to our business items to better serve our residents. We have comment cards on either side, and you could also be acknowledged by myself as a chair, so you could come up and speak. It is a 30-minute time we have, and, Mr. Clerk, we will start at 7:27.
Okay.
So anyone here to address the city council regarding city business? You could step forward, sir. We don't have any cards, correct? Filled out, okay. And just a kind reminder, just your name and address for the record.
Just the city business, meaning like I have part, like problems with the city, or?
Yeah, so this is a public comment, so anything you can speak on today, if as long as it's not an item, we ask you to wait for the item, but you don't have something that's.
No, it is something that I've been dealing with for a while, and I'm trying to get it solved.
Absolutely, go ahead, sir.
Well, it's one of many things, but today specifically.
Because we need your name and address.
Daniel Dumeter?
Daniel.
Okay.
Okay, and then your address, sir.
I left you a message earlier today. I don't know if you got it, I just saw.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry, I had a couple today. Did you say you can't answer?
This is regards to, I live at the corner of Kenelworth and Colson.
I know, but did you say you can't answer because you could get fired at your job?
Yeah, I can, I can.
Okay, so I did, yeah.
I can only be on the phone during my break.
I understand.
Once the break is over.
I know, I just want to make sure you're the right person, I call back.
Yes, that's me.
And what's the address, sir?
5103 Kenelworth.
Kenelworth, okay, go ahead, sir.
I've been living in Dearborn for over 30 years, for 28 years. I have owned property and pay taxes. I deal with just about everything. I mean, I've, 3 minutes, I know it's a limit, and it's not even nearly enough. The last issue that I have with the city is there was some work done on the road in the corner of Kenelworth and Colson. They broke down the concrete, they dug up, they did whatever they did, and then repaved it. Okay, it's falling apart.
So on Kenelworth and Colson?
Kenelworth and Colson.
On the street?
It's the corner, yeah. The corner has been cut actually more than once.
Okay.
There are potholes. Every time a school bus, a garbage truck drives by, my whole house shakes. Any heavy vehicle driving through those potholes, hitting those potholes, causes my house to shake. The floor is sinking, the foundation is cracking, the living room that's in the corner of the house is beginning to sink. I didn't know the reason why that was until last November, when I took some time off from work and I was at home, and in the morning, the school buses, about a dozen in the morning and a dozen, you know, in the afternoon, driving by, and I felt the house shake. It's like a small earthquake. I contacted the engineering department, actually came in person. I related the issue with them. They said, well, it'll take two weeks to do a temporary fix and then another two years to solve the problem. Well, the issue persists even this morning. Actually, I felt the shake even in the garage while I was getting in my car. Long story short is they sent somebody a couple of days after my first visit with the city engineering department, they threw a couple of shovels, not even in the right place. Probably, the thing is that it didn't fix the problem. I came back over the same issue. I told them, I need this fixed before my house incurs any more damage because I'm tired of paying for damage. I already have a broken furnace from the last time the basement got flooded. It's not working right. I lost my washer, my dryer, my water heater. I had to pay for the damage out of my own pocket. It was not my fault. I go to work, I do my job, I pay my taxes, and this is, I keep paying for somebody else's mistakes and somebody else's failures, and this is the last one. I need that fixed.
Okay.
I called the engineering department, the chief engineer. He never answers the phone. Today, I think he lost track of, because I left him a message. He's been ignoring my calls. Today, I called, and he actually picked up the phone and hung up on me three times. The fourth time, he actually picked up the phone, he says, I can't talk to you, I'm in a meeting. Well, sorry, I mean, return my calls.
Right. All right, so Director Hawkins, yeah, if you'd like to come forward. We're just going to get a couple of things so we can get the right information, and then we'll have the director report back to the council regarding. But Director, if you just.
Tim Hawkins, Department of Public Works Director.
All right, so for the gentleman's aspect, I know there was a lot going on. Flooding is separate from this. Do you know if there's a project there that's going on? Because for his, saying his house is sinking, and your house has been there many years, right? Because usually, they.
Yes, it was built in '27, I believe.
1927?
I think so.
Well, so I would say it's settled, so.
So there's one, two reasons we would cut the road. It's either a sewer.
Right.
Lead repair or a water service repair.
All right, can we look?
Either one, if you recognize in the last council meeting, you guys approved the pavement repair contract.
Correct.
That is done annually, so that is approved, and now the contractor will be out replacing places we cut the.
Right, but can you just report back to the council regarding when it's going to be repaired so we can notify this?
Sure, absolutely.
And then more importantly, too, I think, is which one is the road cut up for?
Sure.
Because what he's claiming is not just, it's not a road issue solely. Okay, because the road issue, if there's a water issue down there, he's indicating that his house is, is, is that what you said?
Yeah, all you gotta do is come by my house at 4:00 tomorrow morning and just.
No, no, I know, but we want to make sure we're on the same page because you said your house is sinking down.
That corner of the house is sinking.
Okay, so what I want to make sure is what work are we doing there?
Sure, absolutely.
If it's not a water repair and it's a repair for the road, you know, then we need to get it fixed.
It'll be a sewer or water leak.
Sewer or water leak, so you'll let us know which one.
Yeah.
I just want to know what type it is so we can respond back to them.
Absolutely.
And then what's the expectation time for repair?
Yep.
Now, are we still putting, is there any metal on the street covering over the, Mr. Dumeter? Is there any plates over, metal covering holes?
There was, but it was removed and they covered. Then the temporary asphalt.
Until we approve the cement contract, which is.
Until we approve it, which you did.
Right, and then, yeah, so they have to go through.
And now we'll replace all those. Yep.
So was this last spring was happening as well?
I don't know how long it's been going on. I noticed it last November, Thanksgiving.
Okay, so what happens is, yeah.
I happen to be at home.
No problem. But what happens is, sir, just so you know, so you can understand, and I'm sure you understand, like the building aspect, November, there's a certain time where they can stop pouring cement and we stop doing that type of work until the spring. So we're going to make sure that we find out what is the reason they dug up your street, and then we'll get back to you. Jackie, do we have, I have a call from him, but you guys have a call log?
I do have a call log from him.
Okay, so you have that information. So we'll get back to you to find out what type of repair needs to be done underground, and then when will your cement, when the cement will be done on that street.
They still have to do more work on the ground?
Well, we don't, we're going to find out. We're going to find out because you're.
More than likely not. Repairs are usually done before we put the temporary in, so the repairs have already been done. And then they let it settle all over winter because we couldn't make the repair. We just approved the concrete repair contract.
Yes.
And they should be out shortly.
Well, two things I want to say before I do that. I should have been told that over the phone, one. And second, if there is nothing they can do about it, why did they show up? Because I know a couple of days after my first visit to the engineering department, my neighbor told me that somebody showed up and they threw, they threw a little bit of.
I know, but sir, but no one said that they can't do anything about it with the, with the director's telling you there's a process. So the first process was to get the repair done on the ground, then they put patch until the spring, which we're in right now. Right, I know it's not spring really outside, but it's getting there, and then that's when we authorize the contract to do the cement. So it was, it was just a timing issue, so it was not that they said there's nothing to be done. Does that make sense? He's indicating they do patching before they do cement work. That's the way we do the process. If we didn't do the patching, you'd have holes there, right?
There are holes right now. That's, that's why the, when the heavier vehicles drive by, they're hitting something that causes the whole house to shake.
Yeah, it's a temporary solution. The patches can get kicked out from the, obviously, you have 12, you said 24 buses going by each day back.
I would say at least.
Okay, so it's probably having some damage to it, but we're going to get to it. Okay? And we'll get back to you and let you know which type of repair it was and when the time will be done.
Tomorrow.
Okay?
And what happens to the damage to my house?
The damage to your house, sir, you would have to, that's something that we cannot, we can't entertain tonight. The council cannot authorize any, that has to have an objective evaluation being done, which the council cannot be doing. So that would be something you would have to bring forward yourself to the legal department. Does that make sense, sir? We can't give out taxpayer dollars just by saying a house is sinking. There has to be a process that goes through, and the council does not do that, you have to go through the legal department. All right.
So should he have, like, a contract?
So, no, I know, he knows what, he's fine. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Director. We'll see that from there. So for the public comment, anyone else have a question, and there's no more cards? All right, so at this time, we will close the public comment section. And before we move on to the consent agenda, are there any items that any member wishes to remove from the consent agenda and discuss individually? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Clerk, you may proceed.
Item number nine, resolution in need of offer and support.
Offered by Councilman Enos, ordered by Councilwoman Herrick.
Approving all the items on the consent agenda and requesting immediate effect.
All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the roll? The new roll?
The new roll. Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yep.
Councilmember El-Sawafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Councilmember Enos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Seven yays, resolution passes.
Alright, and where does that take us to? Next item.
Takes us to item number thirty-three.
Excellent.
A resolution by Councilmember Enos and Paris approving the minutes of the previous special open meeting of May first, twenty twenty-five.
Alright, is there any, um, additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? Okay, hearing and seeing none, uh, your unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item thirty-four, resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Enos approving the minutes of the previous special open meeting of May sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Any questions or comments on, for additions or deletions to these minutes? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item thirty-five, resolution by Councilmembers Abraham and Paris approving the minutes of the previous regular meeting of May sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Any additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? Alright, and your unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item number thirty-six, uh, ordinance on the table, ordinance number twenty-four, eighteen forty-one, an ordinance to amend the water and sewers chapter, chapter nineteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article One entitled in general for rates effective July first, twenty twenty-five. Resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Enos to take from, take from the table for its final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Your unanimous roll shall be attached, take from the table for its final reading. The water and sewer rates are updated annual as part of the city's budget process and must be approved by the city council for implementation. The fiscal year twenty twenty-six water and sewer budget and proposed rates were reviewed by the council on April second and reaffirmed on April twenty-third of this year. The rate structure is, remains unchanged from our twenty twenty-five fiscal year. The methodology would be twenty-eight percent of your bill would be charged for fixed charges and seventy-two percent for your actual use charges. For resident, uh, residential customers, with an average usage, the twenty twenty-six rates will reflect a three point three percent increase, which is about seven dollars and forty-one cents per quarter. And a standalone fire line fixed rate will increase by three percent for businesses. Uh, new rates will take effect July first, twenty twenty-five. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance. Are there any questions or comments on the water rates? Alright, uh, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash eighteen forty-one, an ordinance to amend the water and sewers chapter, chapter nineteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article One entitled in general for rates effective July first, twenty twenty-five.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember Elso Wafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Councilmember Enos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Seven yays, the ordinance passes.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item.
Item thirty-seven, ordinance on the table, ordinance number twenty-five dash eighteen forty-two, an ordinance to amend the licenses and business regulations, chapter, chapter twelve of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article seven A entitled food trucks. Resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Hamud to take from the table for its final reading.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Your unanimous roll shall be attached, take from the table for its final reading. The proposed amendments align with the current ordinance and, uh, with the recent adopted food truck park ordinance, zoning ordinance, approved on April twenty-second of this year to ensure consistency and, uh, prevent any regulatory gaps. The key amendments include incorporating propane regulations consistent with new zoning ordinance, reference applicable to a fire, to our fire code guidelines. And secondly, requiring the city clerk to retain a copy of each licensee state license for STFU's uh, for the duration of the local license to distinguish, to distinguish between the STFU and regular mobile food establishments, which are two different types. Adding, uh, reference titles for aesthetic changes to make ordinance easier to navigate as well. This is the second and final reading on this ordinance. Any questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash eighteen forty-two, an ordinance to amend the licenses and business regulations, chapter, chapter twelve of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending, uh, Article seven A entitled food trucks.
Alright, can we have, uh, the roll?
Councilmember Elso Wafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Councilmember Enos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Seven yays, the ordinance passes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item.
Item thirty-eight, ordinance number twenty-five dash eighteen forty-three, introduced by Councilmember Hamud. Synopsis, an ordinance to amend the administration chapter, chapter two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article seven entitled administrative fees, resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Enos to table the ordinance.
I thought it was your, what, um, Mr. Clerk, around thirty-eight?
Yes.
Okay, I have, the resolution was by Councilman Elso Wafi and Herrick.
Uh, I can make that change if, if.
Yeah, if you don't mind, that's what I, just cause in case there's any amendment, there's gonna be some questions on this.
Okay, Elso Wafi and Herrick. Got it.
Alright, so your unanimous roll shall be taken, um, attached, to take from the table for its final reading. This proposed amendment requested by council codifies the fees and eligibility criteria to obtain birth and death certificates. The amended, the amendment increases the standard fee from twenty dollars to twenty-five dollars per record. Seniors requesting their own birth certificate will receive a discounted rate of fifteen, of rate of fifteen dollars from the twenty-five, so it's a ten dollar reduction. Additional copies of the same record will remain five dollars. It's also formally recognized that the silly clerk as provided by these, uh, provided by these record defines eligibility under the Michigan law and establishes a fixed non-wavable fee schedule including senior discount. So this is the second and final reading of this, but we do have some, uh, changes. So, uh, I'll just like to, for Mr. Romer, just so we can have, and thank you, Mr. Clerk, for sending out this, the email.
Yes.
So prior to this, we had, uh, a resolution that allowed you to waive death certificates for veterans. Is that correct?
Correct.
All of them, not, uh, as far as the first one and copies? Or was it the first one was paid? Can you give us the breakdown again?
Okay, so, uh, the ordinance said that I could do up to five, uh, I'm sorry, the resolution said that we can do up to five. So the way that, uh, was explained is that it would be the final five. So in other words, if you ordered, uh, ten, the last five would be free. You'd pay for the first five and the last five would be free. If you ordered fifteen, you'd pay for the first ten and the last five would be free.
No, we got it, we got it. But the first one was being charged regular price and.
Yes, the first one is the.
So if somebody wanted six, they would pay for one and then the five would be free?
Yes, yes, they would pay for one and the five would be free.
Okay, so, and that's the way it was as ordinance? I'm sorry, as resolution?
Absolutely.
So now we're doing, and, and Mr. Romer, just for the legal aspect, so that, that was in effect, so this ordinance, if it indicates anything about the veteran death certificates, that this would supersede and that would be null. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the ordinance would supersede the prior resolution and it has that waiver fee built into the code. So whatever's passed in the code will supersede your prior action.
Okay, just so we could, cause this was not on the Thursday, so, uh, uh, aspect to it. So Councilman, uh, Elso Wafi, you, cause on Thursday, my concern was what I said, is that by wait, by reducing the, um, death certificates to, which is my understanding was you wanted to make them the same as seniors, cause they were not, veterans were not getting a discount. Even though we could argue that most veterans were, are seniors, but let's take that out. Veterans would get a discount, right, for the birth and death certificates. So, but, what I had said Thursday is that by doing that, I, we did not have in there the additional records, which means they would actually be paying more. Cause on a death, you do need more than, you need several. So now we're, I'm sorry, is that not?
That was already in there. The red was already in there. The blue is the changes.
Okay, so, but, the blues are changes.
Correct, the changes since Thursday.
Well, Thursday, we, okay, but on Thursday, we didn't have anything regarding the additional ones. Now we do?
No, red was already there on Thursday. Since Thursday, the blue is the change. So that was already in there, the additional, of five dollars.
That's not the way I understood it. Mr. Romer?
Yes, if I could, so you had no discount for the death certificate prior to the cow, the committee of the whole. It was a discount on the birth certificate for the seniors and no discount on the death certificate for veterans. Following that meeting, Brad sent the council a revised code that included the blue language that Councilman Elso Wafi is referencing, which is instead of paying twenty-five dollars, you pay fifteen, which mirrors the senior discount.
Well, this says the fee for each additional will be the same as record of five dollars.
That was already there prior to Thursday.
Yeah, I know, but I'm trying to, we're, we're trying to get it right, right? What's, what's the five dollars then, the fee for additional copies for the same record as five dollars? It's the last sentence, number three.
It's in red.
Cause that's not the way I understood it, cause I actually said that, uh, what we had in front of us Thursday would actually be a, be a detriment to the veteran, because now they would get a discount on the first one and pay for the additional five.
Yeah.
Don't put that.
Yeah, that's, that's what I, I know, but that's what I said. And so my concern is, I wanna, I think the veterans should be treated just like the senior citizens. There shouldn't be a substantial advantage. And then you also gotta remember that the veterans are afforded the ability to not have to pay property taxes in the City of Dearborn as well, under the standing that they have as well. So I wanna make sure that, you know, that's something that also has to be taken into, to affect, uh, disabled veterans. Yeah, disabled, sorry, sorry. So there, yes, there, yes. So we wanna make sure that we keep it, we wanna be consistent, you know, and to me, I think the seniors and the veterans should be treated, uh, the same. And we did not have a, we, the, the previous resolution, the standing policy, was the veterans would pay the regular price for the first one and get the five for free. So now, Mr. Medelson, can, Mr. Romer, can you tell us the way this ordinance is written? Cause I like to see what paragraph it's in that says their, their, what their price is for the additional ones.
Yeah, so if you look at C one, two, and three, so you have a birth certificate, right, with a discount? So each one, they're paying the first one at the discounted fee. And then you have the, the provision you referenced in three for each additional being five dollars. So they're paying, if you're a veteran, it's a discounted price. If you're a senior, it's a discounted price for the first one, and then each additional copy is five dollars.
Alright, and that's both, so C one and C two, both are for, uh, birth, C one is birth?
Correct.
It's twenty-five dollars for birth certificate. Seniors aged sixty-five and older will obtain it for fifteen, but it doesn't say anything about the veterans there.
Right.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Right? So then the deaths, no, the one after is for death. So the veterans are not getting no discount for the birth certificate.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, so the fee for the death certificate, with the exception of the veterans whose immediate family members obtained it, of course, cause they had passed, that certificate would be for fifteen dollars, so it's the same discount. And then up to five additional copies, it says at no cost. So is that right, or, cause it's saying, on, on number three, it's saying for five dollars. So I wanna be consistent, so, because the clerk, you know, is, is the one I, that I know that we passed, this I was on when we passed the five free, uh, the resolution. But I wanna give you the direction so you know where to go. I mean, you have to have an expectation. So, Mr. Romer, can you tell us how we can clean that up, or is, is that two different things? Cause it says here, five additional copies at no cost. And that one is not in blue. That's in like purple, so is that.
No, no, so, so you're looking at one that is not part of the packet. That, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying. He's, he said it wasn't there Thursday. This was, this was added now.
The pur- the purple was, uh, Councilman Elso Wafi today. The one before you in the cow reads.
I know that, but that, but that's the point, so.
I know.
This is why Councilman Abraham has talked about, uh, things that have been changed without notice. I know you sent me the, the, the email, but I don't know if everybody else received it. So, yeah, just me and you? Okay, so, and I think council, we're, we're gonna speak about this on our council rules going further. And unfortunately, you know, it's, it's, council rules have been in order for, for many years. Under our term, we've already had four or five revisions. And unfortunately, some things that are new, traditional norms are not always accepted as traditional norms, so we have to keep writing them down. And, you know, it is what it is. That's the way it is today. So, it is correct to say that what's in front of us today was not in front of us on the cow. Is that correct? Mr. Romer? Correct. The purple one. Alright, so that, that's. No.
Can you do revisions outside the meeting?
Well, that's, we have to do it on the fly. So that's the issue. And that's the question for the body. If the body decides it, cause the Councilman Abraham wanted to speak for him, but it has brought up the, the question of that these things are being brought up to discuss as opposed to prior to. So the blue was on the cow, correct?
Let me, I'll clarify. The red was cow, the blue are revisions following the cow meeting.
Yeah, no, no, hang on.
The purple version is Councilman Elso Wafi's proposed edits.
I know, but what, alright, I guess, let me reframe it. When I say at the cow, that means that direction was given by the body at the cow, at the meeting.
That, you are correct. There was a follow-up to Mr. Men.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't wanna clarify, but that's substantially different, because that means the seven members had discussed and gave direction for the blue. The purple wasn't.
Correct.
Yeah, no, I, let him answer.
That is correct.
I wanna make sure we get, cause people like to spin things around. I gotta get it cleared out so that everybody knows what's going on. The blue was, was added at the cow by this body and directed by the attorney. The purple was new. So the purple was put in to say that the, there's no additional cost for the five after, which is different than the seniors. And then there's item number three. Mr. Romer, how do we distinguish the item three, which is in red?
That was in the original.
I know, but, but now we have to either eliminate it or cod- I mean, Mr. Romer, what should we do with number three?
Are you, what version are you looking at? The purple or were just the?
I'm looking at the red. I'm, I'm going to the next page, the number three where it says, the fee for additional copies should be the same record of five dollars.
Yeah, no.
Okay, so the version I have has red and blue text, the way it, as I read previously, so you have a first charge for a birth certificate, a first charge for a death certificate, every subsequent copy after that is five dollars.
Okay, and that's for everybody regardless of the discount?
That, you have a birth certificate discount for seniors and you have a death certificate, uh, discount for veterans.
He needs a copy of the purple one. He doesn't have.
Yeah, I do not have one with purple.
Right.
Same.
Yeah, that's.
What's the one you sent?
I know it's the one I sent, but I don't have it before me. So when you're referencing purple, I don't have it.
Alright, so for my colleagues, so we can amend, because I, I don't think that we should. So right now, if, if a, a senior citizen requests a death certificate, they're gonna pay fifteen dollars and then five dollars for every record after, correct?
Senior pays twenty-five. Yes.
Yeah, actually, Bob's right.
Yeah, that's right. So the senior's gonna pay twenty-five for death, for death, and then five for each record after. Correct. Okay, but the veteran is not, is gonna pay fifteen and nothing for the five additional.
Correct. And then everybody else will pay fif- or twenty-five and then five for each additional copy.
Everybody else. So that's why this needs to remain the number three.
That, that is why number three has to remain, because if you're not a veteran, you need to be charged for the subsequent copies, which would be five dollars.
Right, and that five dollars, Mr. Uh, uh, Mr. Clerk, is, we did the research, that's in line with the other cities and that's not an increase. Is that correct?
Correct, it's pretty much whatever your buddy else does.
Right, we only raised it slightly.
You only raised it slightly.
Yeah, to be in, to, because we wanted to be in, uh, in compliance with everyone else. Alright, so how do my colleagues feel? Because I, I made it clear for myself, I don't believe, with my all due respect for the veterans and my brother over thirty years, that they should be that much different than the senior citizens. So I, I don't agree with the, being zero cost for the five and the discount upfront. So, I don't, hang on. Councilman Hamud, did you raise your hand or are you good?
Um, well, I, I guess my one.
Councilman Hamud?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, and I see we're doing modifications on the fly here.
Well, that's, that's because the rules allow it and that's what we have to talk about.
So, um, one is, I think the, you know, the clerk's office did bring up a good point, and I actually appreciate the, the note you sent on the revenue numbers.
Yes.
Um, since it is only a thousand dollars a year that we, that they generally used to waive, and really what we're doing here is we're kind of explain some of the background on second reading here. We're codifying what the clerk's office was already doing anyway.
Yes.
Which was waiving, um, fees for veterans, going back to us being like an extremely veteran and military friendly city. There's even internal policies that no one even knew about that.
No, no, there was a resolution.
Okay.
For fairness, there was a resolution.
So we're putting in the ordinance now?
Well, that's the issue, is that's why I brought it up with the, uh, Councilman Hamud. That's why I brought it up in front of, the opening of this with the city attorney. The resolution gave the clerk the authorization, I was on the board when we did that, to waive the five. But it wasn't a discount in the five. So now this resolution here, that was, that was, I'm sorry, that was a resolution, this is an ordinance. So this will supersede and codify. That's why we need to clarify how we wanna do it.
Yeah, so I mean, in, in the end, it seems that we were only waiving about a thousand dollars a year anyway. So I think, I, I discussed with some of my colleagues and I, we can just make it entirely free at this point. Uh, that would be my offer, actually. Instead of moving to the fifteen dollars, if, if.
Well, it's fi- it's five.
So we can make it, we can make the.
The five zero.
Death certificate free, we can make the, 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 uh, twenty-five, we can make the fifteen free in this, uh, blue copy. And then we can make the, uh, additional ones also free, uh, as well, so. Because I mean, at the end of the day, it's like fifteen dollars and I think our total number that we're actually waiving is so little that, uh, if we really wanna make this statement, we can just do it all the way.
Well, yeah.
That would be my suggestion.
Well, for the clerk, the information that the clerk provided, the seven fifty to a thousand waiver was only for the additional five certificates. Is that correct, Mr. Mr.?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so that's something.
So the councilman is saying to waive the front end this part. It was just at the back end.
Yes, it's just at the back end.
Just the last five.
Okay.
He gave us an, an estimate of what our, is, was the cost to the taxpayers was seven hundred fifty to a thousand dollars. Those were the five additional.
Yes.
And right now, it's at five. Right now, it's, it's, it's the same. They're gonna get free and the seniors will have to pay. And then we also have to put a requirement on what you need to verify that it was, what you said it does say on the death certificate, so you don't have to worry.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's another good point. So the death certificate will indicate that there's, uh, armed forces veterans, so there's no, uh, way that you have to worry about verification.
They, they vet that through the funeral home.
Which is excellent, which is excellent. So that this, we don't wanna put more burden on you, because that's more cost.
Counselor.
Councilman, uh, Abraham.
Well, I offered a motion, actually.
Yeah, I know, I know.
To cut the fifteen to free.
I know, but we're still, right. I understand that. So we're, now we're just taking comment.
Okay.
Right, cause we don't have a support yet.
I need a support, okay.
Yeah, so you have an offer, so that's, you're offering a modification. Um, and then we have to, and is it correct, Mr. Uh, before I get to Councilman Abraham, we would have to clear that with Councilman Elso Wafi and, and Councilman Herrick, is that right?
Well, you can do a friendly amendment through the, the originating offer and support, or he can get a support for his motion to amend and you can vote on the motion to amend.
Okay. Well, let's get the Councilman Abraham's comments, unless there's any objection.
And I have, I have a few, I apologize. First of all, I'm gonna reiterate what I said Thursday. This is why I don't like doing stuff.
I agree.
At the last minute, we spent thirty minutes talking about language and understanding, so I, I hope in the future this stuff, you know, that's why we have a first reading that was three weeks ago.
Yeah.
And we're dealing with this at the eleventh hour. Uh, number two, I, I appreciate, uh, Councilman Hamud's suggestion to, uh, waive the fees, but I think there should be a limit on the total number of death certificates that can be ordered for free. I can't, I don't want somebody to come in and just order a hundred for free, cause they're free. Um, and, and we'll get to that in a second. Thirdly, um, I'm absolutely, uh, supportive of the language that was discussed Thursday night, which is reducing the cost of the death certificate for veterans to fifteen dollars. It was my understanding on Thursday, that was as far as we were gonna go. Um, which is why the amendment that was, uh, in our backup is the, uh, the written the way it was written. I really wish we could just vote on what we talked about Thursday and. and if we need to bring this back based on data and, and changes, to do it, do it later, because I think democracy is messy enough. Um, doing it on the fly even sometimes makes it worse, not better. So that's my comment.
All right, so Councilman, uh, I know Councilman Hamud has a motion, uh, to amend this, and I know that, uh, Councilman Abraham is requesting that we go as, um, as was Thursday, striking the five additional free until we can then, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Until we can further flush it out. Councilman Hamud, do you have, I might get to Councilman Enos, but do you have any objection to that? Or you want, I can have him talk first, in case you have some support.
I just want to say I support Councilman Hamud, but, uh, there definitely needs to be a limit on copies of death certificates. Councilman Abraham brought it up.
All right, so does Councilman, all right, so Mr. Romer, for procedural aspects, but now we have an offer and a support on Councilman Hamud's, and, 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 Councilman Hamud, would you limit it to five?
Mm-hmm.
Five free, uh, limited, uh, was offered by Councilman, uh, Hamud and supported by Councilman Enos. So now we need to see if Councilman Al-Sawafi and Councilman Herrick, the original offers, accept that?
He has a friendly amendment, or he, somebody else can offer support just to his original motion. Then you would vote it.
Okay, so right now, I mean, I want to do what's.
What's easiest is to see if the offer.
Oh, there's offer and supporter, yes. Councilman Al-Sawafi, do you agree to the limit of five free? And, uh, Councilman Herrick, do you agree with that?
Councilman Al-Sawafi wanted to do in the first place?
Right, that's what.
Yeah, but, but Councilman Hamud wants to waive the entire fee, the entire amount.
For the first one?
Yeah. For all of them, right?
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah, that's what, that's what he's asking.
For five.
For the first five, yeah. You want six?
Well, the first one, is that counted as the five?
No.
All right, then we'll say the first six.
The fir, no, it says the first one. And that's just what we're talking. The first one, they're going to pay fifteen dollars, that's what's written. And then the five, we're going to be free.
Oh, no, I was going to do the fifteen, cut it to zero.
Okay, so you want to cut the fifteen to zero for veterans?
Mm-hmm.
And, and you want that as well? And the limit is the five, which is on there?
Yeah.
Which is already on there?
That's already.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, Councilman Al-Sawafi, you disagree with that?
No, but just to make it clear, uh, so it's going to be the fee for death certificates, twenty-five dollars for everybody, with the exception of veterans, uh, will be zero dollars. Who's immediate family members may obtain the first death certificate for zero.
Yep.
Correct?
And up to five.
And up to five additional copies at no cost, which is just a mirror of what we already had since 2018.
That's correct.
Mm-hmm.
That's no issue.
Councilman Herrick, did you, is that good?
Yes, that's fine.
All right. Mr. Clerk, you had a question?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, are we, are we saying now five or six?
Six.
It would be the first six.
It's going to be the first six, yeah.
Okay, the first six, okay.
One plus five is six.
All right.
All right, so any other questions, Councilman Abraham?
Yeah, on the, on the free certificates, are we to presume this is for?
Death only.
For Dearborn resident veterans that passed?
Yeah, let's do that.
Well, but it. I don't want, I don't want people lining up, because we're giving them away for free.
Yeah, let's do Dearborn residents.
The death certificate indicates that they lived in Dearborn and they were a veteran.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yes, and that's what we checked before.
But anybody can die in Dearborn.
Lived in Dearborn, address in Dearborn, residency.
But I just want to make sure when we say who's qualified to receive the discount.
Where's it in there?
That it's a Dearborn resident veteran.
His, his point is correct. A veteran could be visiting and die in Dearborn, which produces a death certificate in Dearborn.
That's correct.
So, if you would like that caveat, I'd have to add language saying.
So right now, there is no care, uh, language that indicates that it's Dearborn resident.
That's correct. It's just, uh, any veteran.
Hmm, okay.
And if, and if we're going to give them away for free, I mean, I think we're giving people an incentive to order them from Dearborn.
All right, so does, um, Councilman, uh, Al-Sawafi and Herrick agree with that amendment to, uh, indicate, language to indicate that, uh, for the veteran must be a Dearborn resident?
Definitely.
Yeah, the, the, uh, excuse me, uh, the, the resolution said that too, that they must reside, a veteran who resides in Dearborn.
Yeah, but this is gone.
The previous resolution.
The resolution is, is no more effect.
Okay.
So, uh, Council, um, Councilwoman Herrick, I know you had said, but I need, Councilman Al-Sawafi, you agree?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Herrick agrees. So we need to make that amendment to Mr., uh, Mr. Romer, to incorporate the same language about the resident and, uh, is the same language in the 2018 resolution stating that they are Dearborn residents.
Understood.
All right, thank you guys so much. Any other questions or comments on this?
No questions.
All right, and this is the second, uh, reading. Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading, and we'll help you through it?
Okay. This is the final reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash eighteen forty-three, an ordinance to amend the administrative chapter, chapter two, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article seven entitled Administrative Fees.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, then we'll get the rest in the language. And I'll, I'll make sure, Jackie, make sure you pull that one for me to sign it. All right, um, rule called vote, please.
Uh, Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Councilmember Enos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember Al-Sawafi.
Yes.
Seven yeas, the ordinance passes.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Item.
Item thirty-nine, ordinance number twenty-five dash eighteen forty-four, introduced by Councilmember, uh, Enos, synopsis and ordinance to amend the animals' chapter, chapter four of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending section four dash twenty-three, entitled License Required, Number of Dogs Allowed, resolution by Councilmembers Hamud and Abraham to table the ordinance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The proposed, uh, durational vaccine requirement mirrors state law and is being added to clarify that it is the owner's responsibility to ensure that their dog licensed, their licensed dog is vaccinated for the period of time of their license that they obtain, including the recent three-year addition of automatic renewal licenses that may require additional vaccine during the license period. Sorry about that. New mics to come after the, after the holiday, after the Memorial Day. The proposed amendments to make these changes require the dog owner, uh, licensee under the ordinance to keep their licensed dogs vaccinated against rabies for the duration of the license, which is consistent with Michigan MCL two eighty-seven point two six six, section eight, and add reference titles to make it easier to locate certain regulations within the ordinance, and to reference the Michigan law that gives the city the authority to require dogs to be licensed, which is Act three thirty-nine of nineteen nineteen. This is the first of two readings. Is there any questions or comments on this? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash eighteen forty-four, an ordinance to amend the animal chapter, chapter four of the Code of Ordinances of the. The City of Dearborn by amending section four dash twenty-three entitled License Required, Number of Dogs Allowed.
All right, and a unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item forty, resolution by Councilmembers Al-Sawafi and Herrick, awarding a contract to R.J. Thomas Manufacturing Company in the amount of three hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty cents for the purchase of picnic tables for city parks. Also authorizing the finance director to transfer project funding in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars from the facility fund to the general capital improvement fund, and to recognize and appropriate the transfer in Project I twenty-nine seven-two-four, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Department has identified the need to upgrade picnic tables across all city parks to enhance accessibility, durability, and the public, for the public use. The order includes five hundred six-foot picnic tables and fifty-eight-foot ADA compliant tables and fifty-ten-foot tables. There we got some pictures on the screen. Each table features a fifty-year warranty. They're made out of a composite material, which will be lighter, better resistant, and, uh, longevity, of course, as well. Fifty-year warranty is, is, is attached with this as well. Following a competitive solicitation, R.J. Thomas Manufacturing Company submitted the lowest responsible and responsible bid for these frames and, uh, tables. In addition to this authorization, the council has requested to approve four hundred thousand dollar fund transfer from the, from the facility fund to the general capital improvement fund to be recognized and appropriated in the project, in the amount in the Project I twenty-nine seven-two-four account. Is there any questions or counts on the picnic tables? All right. Unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item forty-one, resolution by Councilmembers Al-Sawafi and Enos, awarding a contract to Key Construction LLC in the amount of sixty-four thousand dollars for Hemlock Park Cabin renovations.
All right, the Hem, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Hemlock, uh, cabin, a structure that dates back to the nineteen forties, is scheduled to a much needed, much-needed interior renovation. The project will include new flooring, ceiling tiles, fresh paint, and installation of new siding, uh, new door, back patio, uh, back patio, entrance for both functional and appearance. The Parks and Recreation Department, in coordination with purchasing, recommends the awarding, the renovation contract to Key Construction LLC. City council has requested to authorize a contract in the amount of sixty-four thousand to move forward on these improvements. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item forty-two, resolution by Councilmembers Al-Sawafi and Herrick, granting the request of the City of Melvindale to use city-owned property located at twenty-seven oh-one Greenfield Road for its fireworks display on Sunday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, at approximately ten P.M. contingent upon Melvindale complying with all conditions and requirements. Also granting a noise ordinance waiver, uh, for the duration of the firework display, and authorizing the fire chief to set rain dates as needed, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, this is for our neighboring, our neighbors next door, the City of Melvindale. This annual event is hosted, um, to celebrate the weekend of June seventh, uh, with fireworks display scheduled for Sunday, June eighth, at ten P.M. In previous years, the city is, uh, requesting the use of twenty-seven oh-one Greenfield as a designated launch site. The display will con, uh, conduct in compliance with the NFPA one-one-two-six standards to oversee licensed, um, fireworks and inspection by our fire marshal. It's all a standard that we've done in the past. The fire department is also requesting a temporary waiver of the noise ordinance, and also, uh, the fire chief to establish any rain dates if necessary. Any questions or comments? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item forty-three, resolution by Councilmembers Enos and Al-Sawafi, concurring in the appointment of Commander Madhu Basri in the Housing Commission team, uh, for, I'm sorry, in the Housing Commission with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, and we would like to thank the, this appointment is for Commander Madhu Basri to the Housing Commission for a five-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty, uh, twenty thirty. We'd like to rec, recognize all of our reappointments and appointments to, these commissions are so vital. They are volunteer positions, uh, that our residents, uh, do work and get involved in helping the city government. So we'd like to thank, uh, Commander Basri. Any questions or comments? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Uh, that concludes tonight's agenda.
No walk-ons?
No walk-ons.
All right, all right, that's good. All right, Chief, I'm going to need you up here just for some name things. Jackie, do we have a copy of this? Or maybe we can give him Councilman Hamud's copy. So I, for me, I, I'm going to open up for my colleagues, Chief, I just need some help with the awards. So I, I would like to congratulate a lot of your officers, your yearly awards. I know that this is probably done in the past, but with social media and the way it's been, uh, been done lately, uh, it's giving it a new light, so, um, do we have a copy we can give the chief? I just want to make, I know you know their names, but I want to make sure I spell them right. I just want to recognize several of your, the achievements through the year that you are recognizing your officers with, uh, recently, that has been posted on social media, like Officer of the Year. I just want to make sure I pronounce some of these guys. So Corporal Robert, is that, uh, Gafford?
Issa Sheen, Police Chief. Yes, Corporal Robert Gafford.
Officer of the Year.
Officer of the Year. There are many, but only one.
Only one, there you go. And Dispatcher of the Year, this one I had a little time, time, uh, time with. Tara?
Yeah, Terry, uh, Seshka.
Seshka. And that is Dispatch of the Year. And we know, for our residents, we know too, dispatch has been growing, and we have been, uh, increasing salaries and are maintaining many, many people. That's a tough job, dispatch.
Extremely tough, tough hours, a long days, and we're responsible for several communities. A very challenging job.
Yeah, absolutely, so we do appreciate, uh, Dispatch of the Year. And then we have Police Department, uh, Outstanding Service Award for Supervisor. This is Sergeant, uh, is that?
Jared McAuliffe.
McAuliffe, okay. So we'd like to thank him as well for his.
Yes, Sergeant McAuliffe is in charge of our youth bureau, and he does a lot of phenomenal work with our schools. The feedback we get is overwhelmingly positive. We're very proud of Jared's work.
Excellent, we wanted to make sure we recognize him. Then you also had a outstanding service award for Officer Corporal Kyle Bowen?
Yes, Corporal Kyle Bowen, he works in our forensic IT unit. Uh, it's one of the most remarkable units in the state of Michigan.
It has been recognized by the FBI several times.
By the Secret Service and the FBI. We not only download and do a lot of work for our residents, but for the region as well. We've been recognized for that, and we've received a lot of training and free equipment through the feds as well.
Good, excellent, excellent. So we do appreciate that. And then we have another Outstanding Achievement, uh, Service Award for Dispatch Supervisor, Mark Eddy.
Mark Eddy, longtime employee. Many of you might know Mark, he's worked for the mall. Uh, he's been here for twenty-five years, roughly. Does a phenomenal job.
Yeah, and that's, that's, again, he's having that most typical.
Very tough job.
Absolutely.
I wouldn't want to do it.
You have another, uh, Outstanding Police, uh, Service Award for a civilian, and that's Carol Stallings?
Yeah, Carol Stallings is one of our custodian staff, and her, she counts in the work that she does to keep our facilities clean, and the athletic everybody's very much better.
Well, it's great that you recognize her. That's why I wanted to make sure. Then we have Police Department, Michael A. Guido Service Community Service Award, and that's for Corporal...
Steven Dzilinski.
Yeah, I was going to mess that up.
Yeah. I have a hard time with it as well.
Okay.
Steven has a great job. Uh, he's also, he's acquiring a master's degree in social work, and he does a lot of work to support our officers in the peer-to-peer team and takes care of our officers and regionally as well for a lot of mental health issues.
That's phenomenal. Furthering your education is always excellent. That's great. And then you have the Police Department Meritorious Service Award for Corporal, is that Gino?
We call him Gary Sorone.
Gary Sorone.
Corporal Daniel Bartok, who makes me look good on TV, as you might know. And then finally, Corporal Jane Cass.
She's the best.
She's the best. Long family, long history of service to this community, and so we're proud of their years of service and wish them the very best as well. And then finally, we have Reserve Officer of the Year, Sergeant Glenn Skirlock. Many of you might know Glenn. He's been here 20 years plus, and he, you know, doesn't get paid for what he does.
No.
Loves the city, loves serving the community, and does a great job.
Yeah, these are tremendous awards, chief, and I really appreciate it. And for Janet Cass, I mean, like I said, family, you know, when I know that her brother, her father, all officers in the City of Dearborn. I mean, it's those days of, you know, your police officer being, your baseball coaches and stuff has gone a lot of ways, uh, just because of the way the trends of not living in the community as much as in the past, but we still have some solid roots here.
Long legacy, Dearborn roots. Unfortunately, her son chose to become a firefighter. I don't know how that mistake happened, but, uh, yeah, she slipped through the cracks there, Joe. I don't know what happened, but, um, we're proud of that family and proud of Jane and everybody else, so.
Then we had, lastly, the Police Intern of the Year, Zainab. I can pronounce this one, DeBajah.
If you got that one right.
All right. So what do you think? What do we got on her?
She's just a wonderful addition. I don't know if many of you have noticed, but we've done a lot to bolster the ranks of our intern program.
Yes.
Many of those interns have matriculated and become police officers. They're from our community. They serve our community. They provide hundreds of hours of community service through the Explorer Program and Intern Program. It's really been quite of a farm team for us, and it's allowed us to maintain full staffing, and it really works well, so.
Yeah, chief, you know how I feel about the internship. I mean, I really pushed it on my first term and was able to get the chief to, uh, to expand it, and we were able to fund on the council. Then it morphed into, uh, also the Fire Department. There's nothing better than having interns to get your opportunity to find out what you really have.
Correct.
And to go from there. And I know we've lost a few, uh, to, uh, that were excellent cadets that went into West Point and so on and so forth. So, uh, it's a great program, and I'm glad it's still alive and going.
Thank you for taking the time to recognize.
Of course, we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Um, I just wanted, before I turn over to my colleagues, to just remind everybody about our 99th Memorial Day Parade, the longest-standing one in the state. Uh, it's going to be a great time, and if anybody can come out and enjoy it, it's also going to be our CD TV. The council, the 34th City Council will be there, and the rest of our tremendous amount of community and support. Uh, you know, we... I don't know if we have Ollie here. I know you guys like to keep secret, but we're going to have any flybys?
Flyovers.
Flyovers? You're going to be secret again?
No, we're doing it.
We're doing it, okay. I just wanted to make sure, folks, because I like the flyovers. I'll tell you, it's very, it's very nice. People from all over the state come to our parade. It's a longstanding tradition, and, uh, I can't wait for next year's 100th, but we'll be here for the 99th. And hopefully you all will come out and line the sidewalks and, uh, and see, um, you know, all this offer. And then remember, of course, that this is not always about hot dogs and hamburgers and barbecuing. I mean, this is about service members that paid the ultimate sacrifice, the ones that are serving and the ones that have given their life for their country. And I know that the City of Dearborn is a big supporter, and we have always been of our veterans and our people that served. So the Memorial Day, although a lot of people lose themselves in family and fun and picnicking, and I don't know if the weather's going to be good enough to swim, but, uh, I can tell you what, uh, you just got to keep yourself in the right frame of what the Memorial Day is really about. And I think the City of Dearborn does a tremendous job, uh, with the casket and the show of the loss of life and the veterans that, what they had to do for our country to be where it's at today. And everyone knows that freedom is not free, and I hope to see you guys there. And to those that can't, uh, attend, it will be on our CD TV live, and I'm sure it'll be replayed as well. So the rest of my colleagues, Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. I do have a question about Memorial Day Parade, and I think that we have folks here who could answer. Um, following the... Well, first, there's the solemn ceremony with the case on, as Council President, um, mentioned, beginning at 9:30 a.m. on Monday morning. And then there's the parade, and following the parade, there is a remembrance ceremony, and that's going to take place at Veterans Park in front of the Henry Ford Centennial Library. My question was, um, usually we have one of the high school bands perform at that remembrance ceremony, and I'm wondering which one of the high schools, if one is going to participate?
Dearborn High.